Hi, everybody. Let's see some smiles.
No smiling today, Anita.
Why not?
I'm fine with it.
It's a workshop. We can smile. We don't have to be formal.
Okay. Let's all go to San Francisco, though, like Ethan.
Waiting for Pat to see if she can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you now. Can you hear me, Jeremy?
Yep.
Oh, good. Okay, thanks.
All right. I think we're all here that's going to be with us today. Jeannie was gonna maybe join us, so let me just see if she's around. All right, it looks like we have a guest, too. Hi, BD. I think I'm sure BD Parker, she's joined us, obviously.
Yeah, Anita is responsible. She gave me the Zoom.
It's on the website. It's on the town website.
It's public information.
I know.
We want people to come.
I know. I wouldn't have done it, though, if she hadn't pushed it.
There you go. All right, Ethan, you want to open this up and just, you know, this is a public workshop discussion of the planning board on some affordable housing.
Yep. Yep. So, welcome. This is the Camden Planning Board Meeting, November the 4th, 2021. No official business on the agenda today, other than a workshop for affordable housing. And we'll be just having a discussion, and public is welcome to participate and observe. Jeremy will go through the process, but generally, comments can be submitted. And certainly during the discussion as well, we'll welcome public input at times. I guess I should ask first if we have any non-agenda items that anybody wants to discuss.
I just want to thank Jeremy for bringing this forward and bringing us some really great information to study ahead of time.
Okay. Anyone else with the non-agenda items? All right, so no non-agenda items. We will move into the workshop portion of the meeting. And again, it's gonna be pretty informal, but Jeremy will probably take the lead in discussing sort of a background and a brief summary of the documents that he sent out for our review, and then we can pick up the discussion from there. I do want to keep the discussion fairly directed. Want to make sure that we're, everybody's getting an opportunity to speak, and so I'll be going around and sort of asking each individual member for their input on a certain, if there's a certain question or something like that, to try to keep things moving along. We, I can tell Cristo's already ready to not be here till seven. So our goal is definitely to get out sooner than that, but there's a lot to talk about, and we could go on for a long time. It's a very important issue with a lot of a lot of considerations and feelings on all sides. So we are really just, you know, taking our first slice at it and trying to get some ideas moving forward. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to Jeremy to give a brief summary and an introduction to what we're talking about.
All right. Thank you, Ethan. And for some reason, I am like, I can't, for some reason, I'm not allowed to share. I can't find what I need to share. It's not listed in my documents that are open. Oh, that's unfortunate. But what I was going to do, I have it, I had it open a second ago, and it's all open, ready, but my share screen option is not giving me giving me the option to grab that. All right, well, so it goes. What I was going to do was kind of go through what options communities have to address or try to facilitate affordable housing. I think people, especially in Camden, price of land, et cetera, construction, et cetera. I think it's, I think we do need to recognize, no matter what we do, and affordable housing, you know, but I think what we do need to do, try to facilitate, or at least lay the groundwork or the framework out there in our, either, you know, through policy or through ordinance amendments to try to encourage affordable housing opportunities in town. And I think we've done a handful of, a couple of pretty significant things over the last couple of a lot of towns are now starting to do would be, I guess, the primary one would be accessory dwelling units. That was a significant one. That's, I think, one of the biggest opportunities that communities have to facilitate affordable housing, more housing options in their community. Lots of people are doing it. We did it a couple of years ago. We've seen a number of, it doesn't, since we've done it, all units be permitted since we created that option. I see Rockland's doing it. I will say Rockland's doing it with the caveat that they're, they're allowing them to be short-term rentals, which I think is, they're missing the mark on because it doesn't address availability issues. So so what I intend, and again, I wanted to be able to share the screen so everyone on, but I did put these documents up on the town's website. They are there with the agenda. And I did not create this document. This was done, State of Washington and State of Massachusetts have developed some of this stuff. And it was really kind of laying out the, what options you have available. And again, I think we have two options, and those are opportunities to facilitate affordable housing in Camden. One would be through amendments to our existing zoning ordinance. And those things and would be such things as accessory dwelling units, allowing them allowing reduced lot size requirements for multifamily or just even one and two family homes. So you increase the density in a community. Those are options. And and also allowing live-work units. We kind of allow that now with tradesman shops and home occupations, but I think we could be a little more inclusive rather than on allowing more opportunities for people to have live-work units in their homes and on their, so those are kind of things that we can do. We can also look at rezoning underutilized industrial properties. I think everyone understands, you know, there are a lot of industrial uses that are not likely to return. I mean, you look at the tannery, the idea that we'd have a mill come back into the city is, that's never going to happen. Can, do we still have opportunity and the need for, you know, some more commercial and light industrial workshop-type spaces, incubator spaces? I think certainly we do have a need for that in, not just in Camden, but in the region. But when you look at it, and you look at the, again, I go back to the land costs and cost of construction and all that, you know, I think oftentimes Camden is, we may find ourselves, whether we like it or not, a residential, you know, community in essence with services and businesses that support it. A service center, of course, but trying to bring in commercial, industrial-type uses in communities. It's not a, you know, we're competing against a lot of communities around the state, and the cost of, again, the cost of land, I think, is just, puts things very different for Camden compared to other communities. So that's one thing we could look at, and I mentioned that primarily because of, you know, since I've been in Camden, I think everyone knows, over Cold Court Avenue, Ethan's neighborhood, we've got industrial land, industrial is owned land. We don't have much of that in the town. It's really those handful of lots over in, over that way, and we don't allow residential in that area. I mean, that's a prime area for residential. I mean, it's walkable to the town. You know, it's a prime location for residential, albeit we don't have other areas that are zoned industrial or heavy commercial, which I do think the community needs to at least still facilitate or have the ability to have those opportunities and those, those uses allowed in zones and have land available for it. But I do think it may be prudent to look at the industrial zone, especially over there, to allow residential uses in there. I mean, you look up and down our zoning districts, we say certain zones, especially in the downtown, you can't have residential on the first floor, but you can have it on the, you know, upper floors. That might not be looking at, and live-work units as well, industrial area, to allow those as industrial uses. I'm just throwing that out. The Select Board, obviously, housing and affordability is a priority of theirs. It's a priority in the plan. And, you know, anything we can do to add options and opportunities for the town to think about and to maybe eventually vote on are, you know, that this should be our goal, in kind of my opinion. You serve, the planning board serves a couple of functions. You know, you, you review site plans and subdivisions, but also there's this other planning component that is, I think oftentimes, we don't take advantage of enough, but and then another opportunity, I guess, in the zoning piece to encourage would be in some locations, they eliminate minimum lot size requirements, and others, they reduce them. Offer parking requirements, things that you know, or even eliminate square, you know, maximums that we may have.
Excuse me, Jeremy, your, your voice is flaking in and out.
Is it for everyone?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry. I'll go try to go a little slower. Is this better?
It's, it's a flaky sort of electro, electrical problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought it was my connection, but.
Really? Okay.
Sorry, I dropped.
No. One thing we could do, do I sound all right now?
Yes.
Another thing you could look at is reducing parking requirements, I think I said. And, you know, other states allow, they don't have state subdivision rules necessarily that govern what the municipalities must so we can't really amend our subdivision law or subdivision ordinance to facilitate some zoning, to just reduce requirements, because we are, have to comply with state subdivision law. So those are things that we can do. I also mentioned, mentioning the industrial area over by Cold Court Avenue, the tannery. You know, that is another location that obviously was a mill and residential, and that's another prime location for residential. It is in a mixed-use zone, which does allow some residential, but you have to have commercial as well, certain percentage. So you know, should we look at those areas to be that, that zoning district that the tannery's in while we do this? So those are, you know, options and opportunities that we have for, to utilize our current ordinance and just make some tweaks here and there that could facilitate more options and opportunities. I do think live-work units is a good approach. I do think looking at the tannery site, the zoning there, and as well as the industrial zone, just to at least give people that opportunity to do mixed use in that, in that area. And we can also look at reviewing our ordinances for broad kind of interpretations of zoning rules that may prohibit certain developments. These are, like, we have things, if you can, if you've paged through the ordinance, you can think, you can review criteria, especially like zoning board changes to the character of the area. Those are very broad and can be very interpreted in different ways, depending on what board is reviewing it. And it may be clearer to kind of change that language to something else. You, we also use phrases like undue adverse impacts. We could just say adverse impacts rather than undue, and these are just, these are things that communities are trying to do to, to change the review process and make things a little more a little easier to, or incentivize development. And then, on the other hand, there's this other model, which I think we should probably look at doing both, would be looking at affordable housing overlay zones. Again, I think it's important to, you know, Cristo brought up, sent an email out today about what is affordable in essence, really based on, you know, generally, by what county you're in, but I think we need to really, really focus, I think, and really, we're going to tackle this issue so that people, that teachers, public employees like myself and other folks can live in town. I mean, we're not low-income, I'm not low-income, but moderate income. But I think we need to facilitate those kinds of uses as well as low-income, but we do need to incentivize the affordable for moderate folks. And again, a way to do this is overlay zones, one way to do it. Some dog running around somebody's house?
It might be someone using the, their keyboard.
Sounds like somebody typing.
I think she left and she's coming back in. So again, overlay zones, and these are, you know, options that the community has to look at your, kind of change the requirements, since reduce some of the lot size requirements or setbacks or lot coverage requirements for affordable housing projects or developments. I hate to say projects, let's say developments. And it just gives more flexibility than current zoning rules allow compared to the needs that are out there. And I think we've heard, or at least I've heard from a developer, Joe Cludier, and he was involved, and Sagamore Farm submitted a proposal for Sagamore Farm. And he was also made some comments when we were talking about postal residential, about the use of affordable housing overlay districts in Massachusetts. And I, I do think, I found the town of York, it uses them here in Maine. York is doing a lot of things, I think, similarly, that the town of Camden envisions doing, to be honest with you, when I, when I get into the sea level rise and climate change and, and, you know, zoning stuff, York seems to be kind of where we are, or a little bit further along than us. So I am looking at what they're doing in York. I have not been able to touch base with the planning director down there in York, but I have had some calls into them to see how it's working out there in York. So those are our options that are kind of on the table for us to start thinking about and talking about. And what I was really hoping this was going to be is a discussion and just kind of get your initial thoughts and input so that I can get some direction on moving some things along. If, as you know, to try to bring something to voters for June, that all needs to kind of start happening now, if we're going to do that, to be honest, because by mid-March, we have to have the warrant language done. The Select Board has to have that all in line and ready to go to printers and, and all that for, for June. So you know, I want this to be a thoughtful conversation with you folks and the town and everyone in the community. I think, I think everyone recognizes the need for housing. Again, I don't necessarily know that, you know, I'm no crystal ball reader, but, you know, if we do all we can, will we get affordable housing? You never know. But I do think that we do need to provide framework for people to do it, and if they want to. And I mean, we also need to protect, you know, I think, respect and protect people's existing conditions that they have in a way. And I think that's always the, when the rubber hits the road, that's the hard one, I think, for communities. Because I think everyone's, especially when you look at density or changing, reducing lot size, I think that's, everyone kind of likes what they may have, or they may like what they have in their neighborhood, and they don't want to see that change. I mean, I, and I think that goes for the rural part of town as much as it does for, for in-town the lot sizes that we have currently. So I think we need to do this thoughtfully. And that's why I wanted to start this now and get some, get this going. And then I just wanted, and I wish I could bring it up, but I did send, I don't know why I can't share this screen. It's very strange. Maybe I'll try again. I'm gonna try this again. That's all right.
Is that something you share with us, Jeremy, that maybe one of us has?
Well, it's just, it was just a little table of the lot size requirements in Camden currently.
So any one of us, I can bring it up and share it if you like.
Well, let me see if I can find it really quick. Let's see if I can get this now.
It's a PDF.
Yeah. I'm glad this isn't a real formal meeting where I needed to actually show something. Interesting, weird. Yeah, it's not there. But if someone has it, feel free. This is just lot size requirements that I sent out earlier. It's just from our zoning work. I could go over it, just kind of a summary for you all. And sorry about this, the Village District, it's so single-family, generally in town, single-family lot needs 10,000 square feet. And that's, that's regard, that's going from the Village District to extension, if you're on the sewer. There's no requirements in the B1 for minimum lot size. B2 is 10,000, B3 is 10,000.
Jeremy?
Yes.
I have a question for you on that. Where, where does accessory dwellings fall in this?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Mark. And really quick, if you go back up to the village piece, I did, before I get there, I did the two family, I just said 15,000 rather than below, I said 17,000 per dwelling unit. So that's obviously 70, 7,500 square feet per dwelling. Accessory dwelling units, if you remember, we had no minimum lot size requirements for them. So we, we said you could add those no matter your minimum. So I didn't include that here. I certainly can for future, for future. I make sense to include that, Mark. I will do that.
Are you seeing the screen that I put up?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anita. So I just did this for your information, and I'm in the process of compiling what other communities have for lot sizes. Generally, they're all pretty much around this minimum requirement. And I would like to say, I don't think there's any real rhyme or reason for it. Other, that's what the standard planning practices, zoning practices have been over time. Much like the parking requirements in downtowns, and, you know, we've changed over time. That was kind of a old-school planning thought. There's a lot of old-school planning thoughts that aren't so good, that encourage sprawl and encourage investment away from downtowns and push it out into the hinterlands, which, you know, required use, more use of open space, more resources, et cetera, et cetera. Encourages, you know, a vehicle, automobile society. So there's a lot of planning, you know, ideas and principles over time that, you know, have changed based on, you know, our countries and our states and our communities. This is really just a, just a table that lays out what minimum lot size requirements are. Just so everyone knows, the minimum lot size requirement for in-state, just going back to discussions we had prior. For septic system, minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet. We have, obviously, 40,000. I did not include the RU1 and the CR in this. That has never been kind of considered the developing area of the community. So I didn't include that here. And certainly, changing lot sizes, we can look at it there, but, you know, it's certainly the more rural area of town, and I'm not sure we want to go down that road. And I think it's important just to look at areas that are sewed, areas that are not sewed, areas that could be sewed in the future. And, and even, again, look at reducing as potentially in the village extension or the B2, you know, where sewer is required, so or where septic is required. I think it's, we ought to look at reducing that to 20,000. We had that discussion a while ago when we discussed village extension, minimum lot size. I kind of just tied on the vine at the time. I know I think there are pros and cons from, from, from people on the board, and I certainly respect that. But it's all, it all should be part of the discussion and conversation. And, and so that's, these are kind of our options and our opportunities that we have. Pat had asked some good questions. You know, in her email, in an email that I, that I saw just before I came on tonight. You know, incentives, it's hard to, for us to incentivize these kinds of things. We don't have a lot of opportunity. The state doesn't have a lot of incentives, financial incentives. There are some subdivision incentives for affordable housing through main state housing, our main housing now. And I know Joe Cludier was looking at those for part of his project, if that came to fruition ever up at Sagamore Farm. He's been looking at those options. So certainly, you have, I will say, the town does have, you know, we do have some trust funds. And, you know, some of those trust funds have some significant dollars, and I know that there has been some discussion about whether or not some of those funds could be used to help facilitate those in need. Some of the trust fund requirements are very broad and speak to things like helping the needy. And I think, you know, it's, it's certainly an option that we could, the town could incentivize somebody if, if the right project came along and served the right population that we, that we were trying to serve. I think that's possible. That's what I kind of have. I do think, again, I wanted this to be kind of an introduction and just have, get some of your initial thoughts and get a little bit of direction. And I would, you know, from there, bring some information back to you so that we can really start looking at it.
All right. Thanks, Jeremy.
Yeah.
Anita, I think you can go ahead and stop screen sharing since we're now the discussion portion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just gonna ask that.
Yep. So, yeah, we've heard a summary from Jeremy, some discussion around possible approaches. And I wanted to take the pulse of the room, so to speak. Does anybody have anything that they wanted to bring up that was sort of in direct response to what Jeremy has brought up and laid out before us to start? Okay, Pat?
Jeremy, just to confirm, what zones are you thinking of if we did go ahead with an overlay? Or is that still up for grabs at this?
I mean, I, I think that's up for grabs, but certainly, I mean, it would have to be, I think, you know, we couldn't do it. I don't think RU1, RU2, and the CR, I wouldn't think, it would really think areas of the village extension potential, probably, the Village District, and then the Bs, you know, and maybe even the industrial, industrial area, if we do allow eventually also include allowing residential in that zone, or at least mixed use, that would require some commercial, I think. Again, it's about reducing certain requirements to incentivize those things. So we could do that, and I think appropriate in a built-up area, like the industrial area or the the B zones and the village extension and the village.
Anita?
I would say that, that just in studying the materials that Jeremy sent along, I find myself most in favor of the overlay zone, the overlay concept, as opposed to the other couple of concepts which were offered from the, I think it was NEHB document, which offered affordable housing districts as separate districts and changes to zoning to encourage affordable housing. What we're, what, what you were just talking about, I think, were changes in zoning to encourage affordable housing, which actually I'm, I'm fine with. Overlay zoning is great. My understanding of overlay is that, and please correct me, because if I didn't get this right, is that is that the requirements would be lessened or reduced strictures if there is affordable housing in the mix, or if something is done that encourages that. Right.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Do you not want to, I do not think, and I'll just maybe, Ethan, I don't know if you want me to just comment on each question or?
Yeah, I think it's fine. We're just, I do. Yeah, I think it's fine. We're, I think we should just have a pretty informal discussion.
I, I, I mean, I, I think it's a combination of both, Anita, that we need to look at the zoning and overlay. Because, you know, providing those reductions in lot, like lot coverage or, or increases in lot coverage or decreases in parking requirements and setbacks and, and other things that overlays allow you, that's all good. But I do think having, you know, those live work units and also looking at minimum lot size requirements that may be stepped outside of, you know, the idea of affordable housing because someone doesn't want to necessarily commit to affordable housing. We also, I think, need to facilitate normal housing, you know, or at least something that's not low or moderate. People want to be able to add another unit in their big house on Chestnut Street. You know, or, or two more units in their big house on Chestnut. We ought to be able to look at that and.
Want to encourage that.
Yeah. So I think we ought to do both.
I just wanted to mention that I, I was curious, of course, looking from my perspective, which is in my neighborhood. You know, just the houses, literally my neighbors' houses and houses around here. Seven, seven, the 400 square foot lot, 5,600 square foot lot, 8,200 square foot lot, 8,700 square foot lot. We're in the village district, but none of those reach the present requirement of 10,000 square feet. So, and those are single family homes. So I, I am very much in favor of reducing that maximum. I also noticed that when we, a number of years ago, when we were asked, when the town was asked to consider permitting a small dead end road to go into become, become private and owned by the, by the landowner who had the lots all around it down by down by Eaton, I think it was. The old, I don't know where I found it, but when I was researching that, I, I looked at some older maps and it showed that the lots that had been proposed for that area were much smaller than the 10,000 square feet. So this 10,000 thing is, that's happened, obviously, subsequent to a lot of the development in Camden, the more historical development, say the 50, 60s, I don't know when it changed. So basically, we're just sort of reverting to something. You know, more in town. And I'm very much, very much in favor of looking at setbacks. That limit. You know, what someone can do in an in town lot.
Can, can I add on that really quick? Cause you brought up setbacks. I think that's an important piece to this. I, I really do. And it's, there's housing issues. Housing, from a housing perspective as well as a building enforcement and code enforcement perspective. It is really, really challenging the way we have our non-conformity section set up. So it, it's very bizarre. We have some crazy setbacks. If you look in the village, setback is 10 feet. But if you have a non-conforming structure, then it's, it's a sum of 25. And then if you have a non-conforming structure because it doesn't meet the setback requirements, then it's 15 feet on both sides. However, you can actually go and get, and it's not even a variance. We can allow you to do an expansion of 30% of area and volume of that portion of the building that violates the setback. Into the setback. So we allow this 30% expansion. I think that was intended for the shoreline zone when they did the 30% rule. And I think we just, for some reason, carried it over to all of our non-conformities. And it's really, really not an easy, and I don't want to say that's why I'm doing this, but when, when we encounter a contractor or homeowner that wants to add something on and it violates a setback. It is such a complex process that they have to go through. And most communities don't allow those expansions. So if the setback currently is, say, 10 and 15 on the other, that's what it is. You don't get to go beyond that. You don't get 30% of the area and volume to do that. What I prefer, especially in the built up areas, is bring that setback either to 10 or five, to look at the existing conditions in the, in the neighborhood. And I think through GIS, I think we have the opportunity to do that. To see really how many home, how many properties already violate the setbacks. And then look at it and say, okay, what makes sense? Because what the system we have now doesn't make sense and it's really a hard, hard process to do. To manage both for, on the permitting side and the building side and, and the, and so, thanks for bringing up the setbacks, Anita. That's an issue I think we need to look at, look at. Oursing some changes to it. That's, that's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep this discussion moving. I think this is really good. I wanted to just go around the room. Chris, did you have anything you wanted to chime in with right now? In the general sense or a specific sense, however you want to do it?
This is all, I think it's all really great. I think that looking at, you know, reduce lot sizes with certain conditions. I think another piece of it that, you know, not that we want to have another conversation about getting rid of parking requirements already, but you know, the parking requirements are, is a factor that, you know, with the right development, people there, we've got demographic changes that people aren't buying cars as much and, you know, it's not going to be that every family is a two car family. And so we need to look at, because that eats up a significant part of the, the landscape. When you're looking at, say, a three house development project that might not need six parking spots. Though I think that that's something that we should be looking at as well.
Alright. Mr. Seigenthaler, do you have anything you'd like to add in a general or specific sense?
Sure. I, I'm not sure about that parking. You know, anytime I've rented a place. That's, that seems to be very important for the tenants. They, you want a place to park. And it seems that, you know, every adult has a car. So I, at, at, at least that's, that's from what I see. Anyways, some other notes, Jeremy, on this table that you sent us for the lot size requirements.
Yeah.
I don't see R1 and R2 in there.
No, you're right. I, I did say I didn't include those. Certainly will. I just, you know, when the conversation just was that, for the same reason, someone asked, are we looking at RU1 or maybe I brought it up, RU1 or RU2 or CR for affordable housing overlay? My initial thought was no. No, but certainly can, and I can conclude those, those lot sizes are much greater. Those are like 60,000 square feet, 40,000 or 60,000. Depending, so. Certainly, I'll, I'll put that in the table, Mark, and I'll add accessory uses or accessory apartments to it. Yeah, it's just important. I think it's good information, rather than having to pour through the zoning ordinance to see which to have those out in front of us, I think is good. So I can certainly, I'll add those to that, Mark.
Thank you. Yeah, that, it just gives us a complete overview of what's going on.
My, my end goal was to actually give you a little spreadsheet that had what we have and what, say, Bath does, what York does, what Bar Harbor does, what Belfast does. And just to give you what other communities in Maine on the same sheet are using for minimum lot size requirements.
Right. So you've got your deliverables on this then, Jeremy?
Yes.
Another concept that I might suggest looking at is combining single family and two family. So in, in what I'm saying there is, a, a two family doesn't really have that much more of an impact on a property than a single family. So in, you know, when we're requiring 40,000 square feet for a single family. Maybe we should do the same thing for a two family.
Right, or, or, and even take that further, take that into the village zone. Depending on what lot size we come to, maybe say the same thing, like right now. It's one family is 10,000. If you want a two family, you need 15,000. One, you want and two at 10,000.
Exactly.
Yeah, agreed.
That might be a, like a very minimal way to
Yeah.
up increase density and affordability.
Agreed. Yep.
Thanks, Mark. I'm gonna jump in now too and just sort of add some of my thoughts. One thing I guess that would be helpful for me, now I've read through the documents and everything. You know, what are we thinking as a board are reasonable reductions if we're looking at lot size reductions? You know, I saw one mention of Cincinnati going down to 4,000 square foot lots or 2,000, was it 2,000? Is that real? Seems, I mean, I, I remember seeing something like that and so. Yeah, I've got, I've got Cincinnati provides its own code to allow 2,000 and 4,000 square foot lots in older neighborhoods. So I'm just wondering if we have a sense as a board where, where, where the comfort level lies? How small, how low can we go? What that kind of thing looks like? Because I think that's probably, and I'm just guessing, but I'm thinking that that's somewhat the, some of the direction that Jeremy's looking for from the board.
Maybe I can comment before you guys comment. I think that with, with getting our, what we have right now out on the face of the earth. What, how many lot sizes, like Anita was talking about, how many lots existing on, say, Pearl Street are 7,000 square feet? And so I think if I can come up, work with GIS to come up with a map or, you know, some data, some really good information that can show you, okay, we've got, and assessing, we've got X number of lots in the village that are 5,000, X number that are 7,000, X number that are 10, and X number that are this. And we can look at it, neighborhood, but it, see what it really is being used as currently. I think that's the important piece. And I, I'd probably suggest that in Cincinnati. And I've, I've been to Cincinnati, I mean, I'm from Ohio and, and I know there are some.
The city of pigs.
There are neighborhoods that have.
It's true. Have you not seen the pigs?
Not, in Cincinnati, when were the pigs there?
They have, they have statues of pigs painted all over the city. There's statues and they're painted very brightly colored.
That new?
Yeah, no, it's, I mean. I'm talking 10 years ago. It's definitely known as the city of pigs.
I haven't been to Cincinnati in 25 years, so. But, but I think, I, I would bet that that neighborhood, those neighborhoods were, the existing conditions were that low. You know, and they said, this makes sense. We've already got people here for 100 years in this condition. Let's make that the zone standard, so.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful to have that.
I'll do that.
GIS survey, so it's just another deliverable for you to add to your list, but that, I do think that, you know, to, I don't think anybody here wants to turn a neighborhood upside down.
Right.
You know, we don't, we don't, we, we all live in a neighborhood. None of us live in every neighborhood, but, you know, we all understand sort of what the neighborhood feels like. And I think generally, the, the, the feeling of the board, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we're all generally in favor of, you know, trying to do what we can to, to facilitate affordable housing. But I also think we want to be sensitive to, you know, neighborhood, you know, standards that are already sort of in existence.
I, I, awesome point, Ethan. I, I also want to just add, I think we also don't want to contribute to have unintended consequences. Consequences are like lot coverage. We can't get to in certain parts of the town, we can't afford more impervious surface, to be honest. There are neighbors, you know, I'm thinking of like Belmont area. You know, Ethan, I mean, there are some significant stormwater issues. So the more that people to build out on these lots, the more, the more stormwater is going to become a problem in certain areas. And right now, we don't have, you know, we don't have, other than lot covered, building maximum lot, on the lot, we don't have an impervious surface maximum on a lot. Some communities do do that. But I do think it's important that we address our stormwater and our runoff standards while we do this. Because we don't want to, if we all of a sudden allow smaller lots and more people to build on that smaller lot, a larger building. Take more.
With the reduced setbacks and everything else, yeah.
Right, we don't.
I think lot coverage is, yeah, that's, that's something I hadn't really thought of, but it's, it's something that's important to at least consider. And, and, and look at. We've all been around, had an opportunity to speak. I just want to check in with Beadie and see if you wanted to jump in and, and add anything to the conversation.
Yeah. I would.
You've just muted yourself. You would, we could hear you and then you muted.
Alright.
Okay, you're back.
I, I keep wondering if there, and it's kind of punitive thought. But it upsets me, living in Camden, that so many houses and many of them big houses are empty. And it's, it used to be, you know, summer people were here in the summer and now it's like, sometimes they're just never there. And so, and I'm really worried about impervious surfaces myself. So I'd like to see as much use of existing buildings as possible. And my thought, having lived in some places and Champaign-Urbana was one of them. They had small sections, each neighborhood had a certain number of smaller lots and you wouldn't exceed that. And then the other thing is, we used to have a lot of duplexes, a lot of people turning them into single houses. And we could have a certain number per neighborhood, which would be designated that you could, and, and the planning board or zoning board appeals would, I don't remember what, who does what. Would allow a house, an existing house, no new house, an existing house to turn into a duplex or several apartments. And that that be limited for each neighborhood. I don't know how you keep the cost down. I don't know how you keep affordability. But at least you would have more units and maybe you could figure out a way of keeping affordability.
Good thoughts, Bee. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do, again, I think some of these big houses, you know, it's possible to take multiple units in them. And I think we need to look at that, so we'll certainly, and certainly impervious surface is an issue.
Okay, so I'm looking around, just wondering if anybody else has anything they feel like they want to address? Or if there's something that we should be giving specific direction to Jeremy from? He's definitely looking for direction from the board. I can tell that we have, you know, support generally for the affordable housing, you know, initiatives. How they, you know, where the rubber meets the road, as Jeremy put it, is, is another issue. I see a couple of hands up again, so I'm gonna go back around to Pat.
One of the questions I had for lot size in regards to where no sewer is. Are there any certain minimums that are required because you need to have a septic tank or there's going to be a?
Yeah, I think Jeremy said 20,000 for the state minimum. Is that right, Jeremy?
Or was that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright.
So for the septic, I think that's with the, with the septic in mind, 20,000.
20,000 would be that, okay. And the other thing was back to parking. One of the thoughts that came back to mind is when they were talking about stuff or auctions for the tannery lot. And they were mentioning only one parking lot per apartment unit, let's say. I mean, things may be changing. I don't know as far as where people work these days or how they get around. But I, at that time, I remember thinking, gosh, you know, there's so many dual income families and both people working. And depending on where you're located, I mean, a lot of times people have to commute to get to work. So I guess that could still be a challenging point is what I was thinking as far as the parking goes. Think that was the, the two main points for now, given what we've just recently been discussing. But, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of different pieces to this, like the York one that I was looking at or what Massachusetts talks about. So definitely for it though, if we can get something going.
Thanks, Pat. And, and I agree on the, the parking issue, both what you have said and then Mark also echoed or said originally. We may have a dream of being a European walking city, but we are not. You know, and, and there's, there's almost no neighborhoods that are walking distance to Hannaford. You know, you know, or that would, anybody would really actually consider doing that on a regular basis, that kind of. You know, you know, or that would, anybody would really actually consider doing that on a regular basis, that kind of thing. So we, you know, certainly, you know, there are plenty of neighborhoods that can walk to downtown. But that doesn't mean you're gonna get to your job site. It doesn't mean you don't need a car for other things. The high school is located outside of town. The elementary school is located outside of town. The hospital's down in Rockport. I mean, we've got a lot of different things that we have to consider. So parking is going to be a tricky one, and I would definitely be a little wary of reducing those restrictions too quickly. And I, you know, I definitely respect also Mark's input as far as just, you know, his experience as a landlord, you know, I think if I was renting a place as a, you know, a couple, you know, married couple, family of four, whatever you want to say the standard family is, you're looking, you're definitely gonna want two spots. There's no question about it. So we do need to be cautious on that, but I think we can look for possible places to maybe reduce those, those requirements, but that wouldn't be my primary focus at the outset. I saw some other hands. So Anita, I'm gonna go to you next. Possible that you're muted? There you go.
I should be okay now. So I think the impervious, impervious surface requirements are important. And all of these do relate to to the coverage and drainage and all those sort of things. All of which, many of these issues are good arguments in favor of being able to convert a large home into apartments. And when you have a certain number of square feet required per dwelling unit, I don't see how that makes sense for a building that exists and that is on sewer. I'm not clear on what this minimum land requirement per dwelling unit relates to. With regard to parking, perhaps if that is the issue about number of spots and that adding to impervious surfaces, perhaps incorporated into it could be using pervious pavers, which are more expensive, but would enable the builder or homeowner to to be able to have a driveway where the impervious surface is a, otherwise a problem. So the question is, why, it seems like it's an easy, easy move to certainly make it more possible for owners of the bigger houses to divide them. And I'm wondering whether one of the things that prevents that is the issue of minimum lot size per dwelling unit.
Well, certainly, I think it, it makes it harder to develop them. That said, I, since I've been here in the town of Camden, I have not had someone come to the office or make a phone call and say, hey, I own this large building, you know, a large home on Chestnut or Bayview or wherever else, or Pearl Street, wherever else, and say, I want to go, I want to add or make this a two or three family home. So I, I don't know why I'm saying that. I guess there's something you sparked, you know, that in me. We haven't had the demand, hasn't been there. So is it limiting currently people from doing it? I don't, I don't think so. I'd have to, because we know it's asked to do it. But I would, I think going back to looking at getting GIS layer that shows what we have existing, how big are these lots? You know, that have these large homes. How large are they? What are the, what's the neighborhood like? That's the important piece. So I think a lot of this discussion would be much more robust and more productive once we have that information. And so part of tonight was me trying to just gauge your interest and your desire to, to kind of go down this road and, and I'll gather more information to allow you folks to make more thoughtful decisions and more productive conversations.
Right. That's great, Jeremy. And so we've identified a few, a few deliverables for you on the, the surveys and lot sizes and things like that. I saw, Mark, I think you had your hand up at one point.
I, I did. And, and Jeremy, when you talk about looking at lot sizes and taking inventory, I think we ought to also realize that if you've got 10,000 square foot lots and then you've got 7,500 square foot lots. And so in analyzing that, we say, okay, let's reduce lot requirements to 75, 7,500 square feet. Well, that's not going to affect the 10,000 square foot lots.
Right.
Right? I mean, it's, it's just, you do the math.
You can't get there. Right.
Won't change anything.
Which I think is why I think your comment earlier about getting, you know, in the village from one, one requires 10,000, two requires 15,000. Just really look hard at whether or not it makes sense to say one and two can go on a 10,000 square foot lot.
Exactly.
And one and two can go on an 8,000 square foot lot.
Well, and the, you know, the state requirements say 20,000 square feet on a sewered lot.
Right.
So, you know, we, we require 40,000 square feet. So rather than reduce single family to 20,000 square feet, just say
one and two.
Single and, and two unit. 40,000 square feet.
Makes sense, Mark. I, I get it. Okay, I got direction, Ethan.
Hey, good. Anita, your hand is up again? I do want to get back to Chris O in a minute. He's been sitting quietly.
Just wanted to mention if Jeremy, when he's looking at everything else, if he could look at improving the verbiage in the rules regarding spaghetti. I forget what you call those spaghetti lots or just the ability to put a dwelling be in behind another dwelling and only have the width of the driveway as the frontage. That's an issue now with regard to the way that the rules are phrased. And Jeremy has said previously that you can get around that if somebody comes in to talk to him and he can tell them how to get around it. I don't think that's a good way to write rules.
Hold on, hold on. That was stated in a very, I don't think inappropriate way. There is no getting around anything. You comply with the ordinance, right? So it's not about getting around it. We allow our private right of way provision and frontage requirement is pretty simple. And it's just, I will say, the private right of way section needs to be amended.
That's what I'm asking.
For years, that needs to be amended. But we do allow rear lots more easily than other communities.
Okay, well, just clarify that so that a person like me reading it won't walk away saying, oh, that's not possible.
Yeah, understood. Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, Chris O, what do you have for us?
Well, I was also thinking about, I, I still think that parking could be reduced. I think we are seeing a lot of demographic shifts to one car families. Especially in that sector that we're trying to look at, first time home buyers and such. More people are sharing a car. And I'm obviously not saying we get rid of parking. We're not, but I just think it's something to consider. The other thing that I was thinking, you know, we, Jeremy in his opening comments talked a little bit about incentives. And, you know, I think it was in the Massachusetts document that they had discussed not doing, not doing actual cash incentives, but doing various tax credits or reducing property taxes to incentivize developers. And I don't know if that's part of
That would be. That's a good point, Chris O. And that is something a little bit different. That is something that we can certainly look at. Those would be, the way to do that in Maine is through affordable housing TIFs, taxing increment financing. I mean, it's kind of a complex thing. That it's complex to me. I think it's complex to a lot of people. We can certainly look at it. That's, that's a means to the, what you're getting at. You can't do it if you don't have that in your TIF district that's been approved by the state. So we can certainly look at it. CDAC is the committee that would actually be the one that would dive into the TIF, just changing the TIF. So if we continue down this road and that's the direction or that's, you know, an idea to go down, we can certainly do that. The town can. That would have to go to the voters and all this. And the state, they have to prove it. It's quite a complex thing. So we can certainly do that.
Hey.
I, I will say, Chris O's comment, when we say reducing a parking requirement, it does not mandate that a developer, I mean, there are communities that do this, not here in Maine, that say you shall not have more than X number of parking spaces. This is not that. This is just reducing the minimum requirement. It doesn't say a developer is not gonna put in two uni, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. I'm just pointing that out. Okay? I have direction, Ethan.
Okay. Just want to make sure there's no further comments from anybody before we close this one out.
Oh, I just have, just one more. When Chris O brought up the email about income levels and who qualifies, and I don't know, this probably doesn't fall under us. But I was just curious because, you know, he mentioned median incomes within Camden. Median incomes with, in Rockland and how they can differ. So I, I guess to qualify, you know, if you're in Camden, do you, and you're moving, because as far as I also understood, we're looking at the mid-post area, or that's how it has been expressed in the past, and I wasn't sure if that was accurate for our local zoning purposes or not. But how is that regulated? Or how do they evaluate that if you're, you've got people from all over the mid-post area who maybe trying to live in Camden or they're trying to live in Rockland or Bath. How, how is that evaluated?
How do they, how do they evaluate? Well, I'm, I'm missing the, the question.
Oh, the, when they're looking at their median, at the median income levels.
I mean, that comes from the, that comes from the census and there's, you know, that has, break it down by county and then you can break it down even, even lower to the municipality level.
Okay, so if we're looking at Knox County, let's say maybe you would take the median of that county level and that's how it would be evaluated to see if you were eligible for affordable housing within Camden.
Yeah.
Is that it? Okay.
Yeah. That is, that is a challenge, I will say. Because the need in Camden is because the median income is so, is so drastically different than, say, Friendship in Knox County. You know, it's, it, that, that is an issue. And that tends to be an issue for developers when they're going for tax credits and then low income tax credits from the state. And that's why oftentimes you don't see those projects coming to a town like Camden. Because just the median income is such that it is challenging for them to get those low income tax credits. There's about that.
Yep. Okay, Beatty, I want to make sure you get a chance to be heard before we sign this thing off. So go ahead and let us know what you got on your mind.
I'm getting more harebrained, but two things on the parking. Eventually you turn into a city and you park on the street and that should be a consideration in some locations. And incentive, I was wondering about negative punitive incentives where if you permitted a certain number of multiple, you know, duplexes and you limited that, say, in this area, you can have six of them or three of them or two of them. And is there any way to tax people? And then, I mean, they pay property taxes to the town. Could you reduce property taxes for this certain number of multi-housing duplexes or whatever? Anyway, I, I don't know how this works, so I just threw it out. That's it.
I, I don't believe, I don't believe you can do that.
Yeah, thanks, Beatty. I mean, I think the idea of incentivizing and stuff is really interesting and also extremely tricky. And that's something that, that, you know, we should definitely look for opportunities to incentivize. I wonder about disincentivizing. It might be a little bit trickier, I would guess. But I do, I do welcome that input and you know, if we can find ways that we can incentivize that work, you know, to meet the goals of the town, I think we should look into those. But those are not as easy as, you know, not readily apparent, I guess is what I would say, as making something like an overlay district and making things easier just on developers in general. Go ahead, Chris. I see your hand.
I just wanted to circle back to what Pat was saying, asking about and make the distinction that you don't really qualify for, in terms of affordable housing. There's qualifications state and federally for low income subsidized housing. Affordable is just sort of a guideline to say that that's a percentage and, and it's worth looking at, which is why I was, I just put those figures out there to sort of say, here's, here's sort of the, the area of what we're talking about when we say what we're, what we mean by affordable housing.
Yeah, I think that's really important. And I appreciated your, your emails on, on that and you know, just the, the distinction between what we call low income and, and affordable housing. You have to make sure we keep those separate. And then as, as everybody's been talking about here, what affordable means in Camden is not what it means in other areas of the state.
And if you, if you go to main housing, they can, if you want to see it broken down by.
I did click that link, yeah.
They've got it by county, by congressional district. You can compare, like I have, you can look at Camden versus Hope, for example, or, I mean, you can pull all those numbers and really start to see what regionally is affordable.
Yeah. And I think, you know, I don't, I don't, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna ask Jeremy to post his salary on here. It may be available somewhere. But, you know, what is affordable? Like what is, what is a municipal employee paid? What is a firefighter paid? Are they able to live in Camden? Those types of things, like, that, you know, people who work in the restaurant industry. Can they afford to live here? Can they rent an apartment? You know, not everybody's gonna be able to buy their house with a white picket fence, but can they afford to live here? Those are the types of things that, you know, that, that to me is what speaks to affordable housing. And, you know, for some, they're definitely gonna be low income. For some, they're gonna be, you know, in the, in that middle range, right where you're 30%, you know, is where you put it, you know, the median income here in Camden. And then others, you know, are gonna be above, but we do want to look at all those options. See if we have anybody else who's looking. Mark's got a hand up and then Anita.
So speaking of disincentivizing, you know, our, our government has already done that in, in this pandemic period where they've told, they've told tenants they don't have to pay their rent. And so, and me for one, I mean, in landlords, it's, you no longer want to rent to people on a long-term basis. You want to have a, a specific term limit. And so that's pushed a lot of rentals into vacation rentals. And I, you know, I, I don't know how we can solve that or what we can do about it, but, but you know, when, when you have tenants that, that don't have to pay their rent and you wind up supporting them, it, you, you get out of the business. You don't want to do it. That's all I have to say.
Gotcha. Anita, you had your hand up?
So it was a very interesting mental exercise when the house, I spent a dozen years getting around to renovating, it's finally up for rent and deciding how to rent it, so to speak. And we made a decision as a family to rent it year round for the good of the town. But I don't think that if, if I were in need of maximum income, that would have been the most economical choice. I don't know. I didn't go through the numbers, but I'm wondering whether whether something could be taken into consideration regarding the Airbnb, the pressure for, to Airbnb and that, that it's an economic pressure. I really appreciate Mark's points. I think they're very important to consider during this COVID epidemic. That's, I can't imagine how difficult that has been for owners of rental properties. Hopefully we'll be getting out of that soon and it won't be an issue. But still, there is an economic incentive for anyone willing to put in the work to do an Airbnb and especially right in town. So Uh, if there could be some kind of disincentive or some, some kind of encouragement. So that a year round, you know, I'm writing to school teacher and a boat builder, so those are not typically your high income earners. And I'm, I'm delighted that those people can live in town. How can we enable more um to live in town by incentivizing or disincentivizing?
Uh, yeah, I um, you know, I I'm I'm a mixed opinions on um. On uh bringing Airbnb type discussions into this whole thing, but I think it does need to be part of the larger discussion. Um, you know, I've I've actually been hearing, uh, I can't remember. Was it, it might have been Rockland that just recently passed an ordinance, or maybe it's somewhere else and I've got it mixed up. Um, you know, talking about uh limiting Airbnbs to owner occupied. And if it's not owner occupied, then a certain percentage of the of the um, you know, length of stays and things like that. That's a whole nother um area that we can look at, but I don't wanna drag it into necessarily to this particular discussion. Because I think it it's gonna take, it's gonna be heated, and it's gonna take a lot of work just to get to that as well, so. The 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 proposals that we have in front of us right now from Jeremy look like, you know, overlay district, reducing lot sizes, things like that. These things like, these seem like things that we can accomplish that um maybe are a little bit easier to get done and get passed by the voters. Um, and and get something done quickly and then start to address those other issues again as we get into long term uh planning issues. Um, I am trying to wrap this meeting up now, I think Jeremy's got the direction that he was looking for. Um, but I don't wanna leave anybody feeling like they're shorted on their conversation here, so if anybody wants to um jump in real quick, that's fine, Chris O.
Uh, just quickly, I was just gonna, when I was trying to pull those numbers, um, and I was looking for sort of. Info on, you know, rentals in Camden, Rockport, Rockland. Uh, I didn't spend a huge amount of time on it, but basically I could not find a house or apartment to rent in Camden. I literally could not find one, other than Airbnb, there's just not, like, nothing, so. Um. I'm just putting that out there as a, whether it's Airbnb or factors, but. As we're having a session, it's truly, there's just nothing.
Yep, yep. Okay, uh, Anita, final comments?
I did have one last last question regarding the. Um, in the reading that we had, there was a comment about um. The increased cost of education within a district where affordable housing is um made more available. And I wonder if Jeremy could help me understand that better, because I thought property taxes paid for education and that. I didn't see how affordability would impact that, can't understand the.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually probably chat with Carrie, um, town assessor on that a little bit, I mean, I know he's got numbers on what it costs to um. Educate um a child, and I mean, a lot of communities struggle with this, the more um. You know, the more you bring in, it, you want to have a community that is lively and diverse and has families. Um, but as you bring in more families, um, more kids at the school means um more cost on the education side. And I mean, I can certainly talk with with Carrie, um, on the ass- from the assessor, and I know he's talked about it with me um lots. Um, what it costs, um.
So you're saying, like, if if we, for instance, made four apartments in a, in a house that already is paying property taxes. The property taxes wouldn't change, but the um pressure on the education system would change.
I think in essence, that's a good example, right there, yeah. And actually, you may find that that four unit is actually assessed less than the single family. That's all.
Well, that's something to be looked at.
Well, you know, the market drives this stuff, you know, so, all right.
Oh, Chris O, to to uh touch base on your rental comments there. I just had two Camden rentals advertised. They were uh put in um Sunday, and in two days, I had over fifty responses.
Oh, crap, yeah, yep, no doubt it. Wow.
Yep.
That's helpful, I mean, that.
That that doesn't surprise me one bit, but it's, yeah, yeah. Camden, Maine, a great place to live, work, and play.
If you can.
If you can.
We're one, one out of three.
Okay, Chris, so the only comment I wanna hear from you now is your motion.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I heard a second from Seagull Dollar, uh, go around, Pat?
Yep.
Anita?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Chris O?
Hi.
Tonight from me, the eyes have it, uh, that's the end of the, uh, we're closing now the the meeting. Um, and uh, I guess, Jeremy, do we have anything planned for the next two weeks?
Oh, I mean, it was just gonna probably be to continue this, I will say that there's likely a couple of um. There may be a couple of zoning amendments that you guys are gonna start um having to um jump into, and those are not ones that are proposed by me. Um, Lyman Morse, um, as part of their um, their Marina Expansion Project. Um, they are going to be proposing some zoning ordinance and some harbor ordinance amendments, changes, amendment changes. Some of those are actually gonna try to bring the harbor ordinance down, the the town shoreline zoning standards um into kind of conformance with each other. Um, to make they, make sure they read the same, um, and um, there's also, again, I had mentioned it prior about. Likely we'll be seeing a a zoning amendment request to allow adult use um retail um intent. So, the two that are moving forward that I'm aware of, nothing's been submitted yet, but um, that will, likely we'll be seeing that in the next month. Whatever.
All right.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, for your time, uh, we'll see you maybe in a couple.